While we try to work out how we can conduct a little business tonight. Everybody check your mics, make sure they are on please. And if anybody viewed the agenda posted online, we'll go a little bit out of order tonight. First I stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please do a minimum of silence, please. Thank you. So, we have four people here, we need five for a quorum, we have another member who was racing here to join us. So, we can move forward with some of the presentations tonight, we just cannot go, we cannot vote on any items until we have a quorum available, which is good news for Mr. Maraska. If you would like to go first and tell us a little bit about the construction of the high school.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Thank you. Take all the time you need.
Well, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Husken, thank you for having me here. We were blessed with a lot of dry weather this past month, so we have made significant progress on the actual site itself.
Take all the time you need.
Pushing dirt around, getting that bus lane in, so you'll see it here in a second. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Husken, thank you for having me here. We were blessed with a lot of dry weather this past month. So, construction progress, we're four footers right now between the site itself.
Take all the time you need.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Husken, thank you for having me here. We were blessed with a lot of dry weather this past month. So, we have been significant progress on the actual site itself. We will have baseball bats on all that we can find here. There will be spot tight lines in this wood bench, definitely working it out. Continuing overhead dustwork, domestic water piping, and hydronic mechanical piping, that's all going still. Roof tops, air handling units, RFPs, continuing to arrive on site. The chillers are already here, and they are, they're being installed right now, they are set on the pad, and they're just plumbing them up right now. And we continue to set roof curbs, the air handlers, and mechanical equipment, that's all. Brick insulation, spray foam insulation are continuing, we got most of the spray foam insulation going on around the main building area where the gyms are. There's a few fresh courses of brick are done around that area, and probably later this month, you're gonna see a bunch of brick go up. Getting that pretty hard in ours, so you're gonna start seeing a finished product on your exterior. Brick insulation, spray foam insulation, we're continuing electrical rough areas, setting boxes in the walls, and they're fully wired, so those boxes throughout the building, also setting into panels, things like that. Roofing is scheduled to begin this month, starting with the gym areas. Those curves are already set, so materials are already here, so probably next week, you'll see darkened curves are having ready to go. And the RFP for the cafeteria furniture that I mentioned last month, that was released this past week, and there is a pre-bid meeting next week to go over that scope with prospective bidders. So, to clarify and define that, perp are already set. One of our purchase update, tax savings right now, we're at 1.17 million change, year-to-date, full of $400,000. Biggest one we just did was for the site concrete, they should get that purchase order. Still looking for purchase orders for all the flooring, storefront, glass, or glazing. Case for auditorium seating and leakers, those are just, not everything, but that's just a big ticket item. And so on to the photos, this is your new bus loop, you see right there, they're trenching for the, to get some power over there from one of the poles for the sight line. This is one of the new structures that's cut off there. This is setting a new underground structure, this is in front of the existing high school. We had to shut off that tire road going down there from Howell, Howell batch road there. Because we actually have to get across there, set the structures in, we actually have to regrade that, it's gonna come up, you know, you notice that we're about several feet above what the rest of the area is, we're gonna grade that out, slope that out. This is one of your elevator pits, this is your, one of your main elevator pit, in the, down Main Street, in that black paint that you see on there. Actually a waterproof mastic that they put on the, on the block that goes sub-grade, so that you won't ever grade that out. And here's the metal stud framing that I've mentioned, this is one of your elevator pits, a big push on that metal stud framing, I like metal stud framing a lot, it goes up quicker. And here's what it looks like from the exterior of that, that same wing, you can see they've got the entire exterior of that done already. So, that just needs some sheeting on it, start doing some spray foam insulation, and we'll get some work on that. Here's, so these next few slides, or next few photos are gonna be more of a time lapse, as best I could do. So, this is your CTE area, this is when they first, they get in, they report the slabs, we've got some steel above us. And they're setting these door frames, they set the door frames up, and they pop chalk lines to it, make sure everything looks good before they start laying any block to it. Next photo, you see how it starts going up, because they start putting the block up, making sure everything lines up perfectly. The other side of it, you can see they keep going up, keep going up. And this one, you see, this is actually just north of your auditorium, so that's like your theater arts areas right there. They've almost got that all the way at the top, you can see the decking's already off there, so they're making good headway on that. Here's your decking over the auditorium, it's complete, I don't know if you can see, but there's structural steel in there at the column roof for the air handler units. I expect, they're installing the mezzanine steel right now, and I expect probably by four to six weeks, they're gonna dig this pit out, which will be your auditorium CTE, and then they'll come back in and pour that slab of concrete over it. And here's your chillers and your mechanical, where you can see they're all bolted to the slabs, the curves on the slab, but there's a lot of big hydraulic piping that has to be plumbed up to that, it's in the works, we're on site, we're doing it. And I also managed to dig up a couple of aerial photos of the site for you all this month. This is north, north facing south, so that is academic wing A on your bottom left there. You can see they've got the decking, roof decking on top of that wing, you see the concrete slabs being poured on the southern, you know, that area B of the academic wing, second floor. And you can see that you've got deck and roof all up on the gym, this is probably a week and a half over, so you don't see the decking on the auditorium, where they see the area, but it is there, as I see. And here's just another aerial view, again, on the opposite side, this is south looking north, and you can see we've got the bus, the bus parking lot being stoned right there, and there's continuing all around. So, we made a good chunk of time, despite everything that happened last month. Actually made up three days this month. This is south doing very well, but no rain, we've got a lot of progress.
Any questions? Where we born? Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
We're pouring slabs, pretty much, we're pretty much, almost done with slab on grade, except for the kitchen area and the main area that we're gonna tie everything together. Oh, absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir, there's flooring that goes on top of that. We're pouring slabs, we're pretty much, almost done with slab on grade, but we also have, in this project, we also had the contractor give us a price for moisture barrier on top of the concrete. So, that's extra protection, a lot of times when you pour slab, you have to put air conditioning in the building and wait for that air conditioner to pull moisture out of the slab before you can put flooring down. This mitigates that, gets us on there right a little faster. That's already in price. Yes, sir.
Could you give us a brief update on, yes, and I know we don't have the OSHA reports or anything, but, but the gentlemen that were involved, how are they doing?
They're, they're, they're back at work, they're back, both back at work. Like I said, I mentioned last month, the Masons actually self-reported and called OSHA out there to help with the investigation, we haven't heard anything back from OSHA. OSHA came on site, they wanted to see our site-specific safety plan, they wanted to know what the sequence of operations was, structuring that wall, they wanted to see the detail for it. I guess they had, they have no immediate issue with anything that we're, that we're doing, we haven't heard, no, I bet, I don't have a time to, how long it takes, frankly, not, personally, I don't know what OSHA does, and how long they take to give support back on that. Absolutely, everybody's fine, anything to, whatever we're doing. OSHA actually gave us the clear, all clear, to go ahead and remove the debris and reconstruct it. And we've done that, we haven't reconstructed it yet, because as I mentioned, it's not on the critical path, it's gonna get done, it's just, it's not pertinent to the field right now. I'm sorry? Exactly, we're gonna do it, it's not gonna come down.
Any other questions?
We haven't reconstructed it yet, because as I mentioned, it's not on the critical path.
Thank you so much.
It's gonna get done.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Thanks. Next, we have derivative success, special education, Ms. Bruce and Ms. Eeks, please. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Dr. Husken, Chairman, Mason, and school board members. Ms. Eeks and I appreciate you, and I know some of you are like, why is Ms. Eeks here? Because we're gonna include some preschool stuff, along with the SPED update, because the biggest initiative we've had has been inclusion. And we're gonna get to that, so she's gonna take over. We just wanted to give you a general update on just some numbers, and where we are, and what next year's gonna look like in relation to some things you guys have already heard about. So, in October, we moved to PACE, so if you looked for us at Mary Bethune, we're not there. We created office suites, and just really feels like confidentiality increased once we are all just in that same space, and no one else is, is in that space. Technology is beside us in their separate area, and then Ms. Witt is on the back, is on the front side. So, if you come looking for us, I always feel like Wizard of Oz by saying, but we are behind Door C, that's where you can find the Wizard of Oz, and I am maybe. But we have 14 members that are down there, they do share classrooms that we created, suites in. And I think if you polled them, that they would say it's much better. We're all on the same hallway, up here, we were broken up, and so Dr. Husken had that grand idea to move us, and that stressed us out a little bit, I'm not gonna lie, because we have a lot of stuff, and so, but it has genuinely been the best thing for our department. We're able to hold all of our summer meetings in our department, and not have to sign up for a conference room or anything else, we have them in our department, and parents are easy, they can find us, and it's just worked out. I know that contracted services are bill you guys see frequently, so I just wanted to give you a little update on that. We still will be contracting all of our occupational therapy services and our physical therapy services, however, we have one less person for physical therapy. We have an added service of behavior therapy, and that is on an as-needed basis, for lack of a better word. There's, there's some hoops to get through before you get to that, we have some, there's a process to go to that, but there is an extra service that has been needed. Speech therapy, we are slowly building our county capacity back, but we do still have the contract for that service. And so every time a speech therapist moves back to the county, or comes back, and I hear it them, I try to contact them, because that's, it's just cost-effective for the district for them to work for us instead of the county. But that's kind of where we are with that. Virginia IEP is where I got your numbers for tonight, because December 1 count was well, December, and a lot's changed since then, so just try to give you a little more accurate figure. We have two grants in my department, one is 619, and that's the preschool money, right now, we're looking at 147. That includes the 30 new referrals we've gotten this summer, whether they're infantile or parent referrals, we do, we have, we've rolled in and tested about 30 kids, and are writing their IEPs if they end up qualifying. Right this minute, we have 692 under 611, which is the K22 money. But that includes, to give you a little frame of reference, that includes the kids that we may serve at CH Brands, or Head Start, or any of the private schools, Halifax Christian School, for example, all of those guys. It also includes the students that we have who receive speech therapy, but they may be homeschool, and so it's a little inflated, but not by 30 kids, but that includes everybody. Just to give you a frame of reference, with 692, I say it lots of times, but that does include all of those guys that we serve in those other locations. So then I thought you may be interested in knowing who we serve the most, or which disability category is, stands on top, and so it goes in that order. On top is other health impairment, we have 273 students served under that category, specific learning disabilities, 248, autism's 136, developmental delay is 105, intellectual disability is 38, and then emotional disability is 37. I will also tell you that sometimes we have kiddos served in more than one category, so they very well may be showing up in two categories, but that at least gives you an idea. It's not enough to skew other health impairment from being a top category, so. Then we have three recent initiatives, I'm gonna go a little bit in different order than what is gonna be on the screen, I'm gonna start with parent engagement. Super pleased this past school year to be able to partner with DARs and PTC, so PTC is the Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center. And they have just been, they have a wealth of knowledge, and a lot of times, parents don't know to access it, and everything's online, and they have all these modules you can take, but they're also willing to come out. And so we were able to host our first special education parent night, that included members of my CAC, it included DARs, it included the Southside Community and Public Schools, and also PTC. And so we're already talking about having tubes for this coming school year, so there'll be a fall and a spring, just to help raise awareness, raise parents, the more you know, the better you do. And so it's just to help raise parents' capacity and making sure that they understand what's coming next, why did something happen the way it did? And hopefully raise my numbers that are in my CAC, which is my special education advisory council. Right now, I have membership from every building, but it's just one, and I would really rather it be five, or more than that. We have room enough to hold it at PACE and still have more than, might sit around the table, but have a really good core group right now, and they are also gonna help me work on building, membership, and having people come. Because the more people, the more information we'll have come back to us, of things that might be in places that no one's obviously told me. So, parents are always willing to tell me, and I appreciate that. Another one is assistive technology, we've worked with T-TAC for the past three years to create a pretty solid assistive technology team. And in turn, that team's been able to help more students, and we've been able to add technology to students' IEPs. Everything from an iPad to a pencil holder is considered assistive technology, so it's something that sometimes is very minor, a pencil holder, to an iPad, and those two things aren't, but they are considered the same, they're equal in the eyes of assistive technology. And then lastly is inclusive education, we are moving in the right direction. Inclusivity is not something that's gonna happen overnight, except for pre-k, and we sort of said, yep, we're gonna do this, and it's easier with the babysitter, it is a fifth grader. They mold to where we put them, and so we have, we are moving in the right direction, we have fewer and fewer, the way the state gauges it, is students that are more than 50% in a self-contained classroom, and so we're getting there. A lot of pieces are helping with that, one, you guys approve the board, two, I teach. The more staff know, the better they do, too, and so I know we have pockets that need improvement. I would be alive if I said we didn't, but I think building our staff capacity is going to help them be better in the classrooms. And I, I'm looking forward to seeing where all that leads us. One piece is the Literacy Act, I know, I'm not gonna repeat anything, but Miller, who's there, the expert in it, but I wanted you to know that special education staff is being trained in the exact same manner that the general education staff is being trained. Which in turn is making me change up the way I do PD in my department for this coming school year. I know when enough is enough, and I recognize that, and so I'm creating SaaS modules for my department, so there's gonna be things that my, I'm gonna make videos, it's gonna be a big showcase of SaaS, but they'll be able to do it on their own time. Instead of me saying, you need to be at PACE at 3:30 on Wednesday, when I know they have an enormous amount of PD to do for the Literacy Act. And so, I just, I've gotta be cognizant of that, because they're already inundated with PD for that. And so, what I need to train them can either be done at staff meetings, faculty meetings, at the principals, we're already having, maybe 15 minutes, or through the campus modules, and so I'll be pushing that out. I'm not gonna have it pushed out in August, though I also don't wanna stress people out, but by the first of September, I hope to have it pushed out, so that everybody can start with me. You know, it's just like teaching college, and they flip through the modules, and then want to see what's coming, that same sort of impact, but it's just a refresher course, if nothing else, that would be, you know, everything we need on it is gonna be done, and that's what he needs in the building. And I think that's my, my last, we're gonna do a mind shift, a mind shift, a mindset shift, and a speaker shift, so Ms. Eeks is gonna take over now.
In 2019, Martha and I thought, you know, we need to pursue inclusive practices, and let's start pre-k. So, we wrote a competitive grant, and entitled "Inclusive Placement Opportunities for Preschoolers," we refer to it as APOB. Well, this grant is through Virginia Department of Ed, and, and their training and technical assistance, and it's through our VCE. So, in order to receive this grant, Martha and I had to agree that we would participate in an intensive system change, and that we would create more access for our young children with disabilities, and that we would expand our preschool inclusive placement. So, we received the grant, and about a month later, the pandemic appeared, and everything was shut down. So, we got the grant, but we had to wait until about the end of '21 before we could start working with T-TAC. And, you know, we wanted this grant, because there's no longer a question about whether or not to include children with disabilities. The question is how and where are we gonna begin to include them, and we thought no better place than preschool, and we pray that it will trickle up from there. So, Virginia Preschool Initiative, that's me, Martha and I've always been dedicated to work together, sustain partnerships, and figure out how we're gonna do this thing. So, the preschool inclusion program is founded on the belief that young children have a right, regardless of their background and ability, to be nurtured, challenged in an environment that encourages the expression of ideas, curiosity, spontaneity, enthusiasm, and just playing along, joy of learning. And we all know that children benefit when they're with their peers, so we formed a team, and that team has been diligently meeting with us for a couple of years now. It was, the team was with principals, Martha and I, teachers, parent, and we decided to work in closely, and we had to complete a major rubric to figure out where actually is Halifax County public schools right now, with inclusive practices for preschool. And once we completed that, we knew we'd be in the right direction to move forward. So, because of the grant, T-TAC has provided professional development, an amazing amount of professional development, of no cost to the division. And we have met with principals monthly through T-TAC, through T-TAC facilitating it, we have, we've had full-day professional development with preschool teachers, we have that, parent professionals. And through this process, we were not to move fast, we were to do it slowly, and we were to ask questions constantly. So, what's going well, what concerns do we have, how can we tweak it, and now how can we continue to develop more. So, tonight, later on, under the consent agenda, you have a copy of our preschool inclusion experiences guideline, guideline. And this document is a result of all the hard work of principals, teachers, and T-TAC to put something in process for us. So, VPI, me, and Martha and Sped will continue to provide this ongoing support related to inclusive practice. So, our staff will continue to receive professional development, co-lab, teaming, strategies for co-teaching, joint planning, embedding IEP goals, instruction in daily routines, setting, how do I set up a classroom? How do we assess daily routine to make sure they're just right for our children, assistive technology, progress monitoring, professional structure, all of those things. So, June, if you'll turn to the next slide. So, in that guideline, we now have four different types of preschool classrooms. We have Gen Ed pre-k, but they all have special in it. We have reverse inclusion, they have a SPED teacher, a SPED paraphrone, and a Gen Ed paraphrone. We have co-lab pre-k, which has a Gen Ed teacher, a SPED teacher, and a Gen Ed paraphrone. And then we still have the need for a few ECSE self-contained classrooms, and that's where a SPED teacher and a SPED paraphrone. Turn to the next slide. So, by school, you'll kind of see where we are. Clay's Mill has three VPI classrooms and one self-contained. Sania has two and one self-contained. Cluster Springs has three classrooms, one reverse, one self-contained. Middle School, Maple and Scottsburg both have one VPI and one self-contained. And then of course, we have Synergy with one VPI. So, with that, we have 24 pre-k classrooms, and it used to be, it would be like 12 or 14 VPI, it would be eight or 10 or 11 self-contained, but. Self-contained pre-k classes out of 24, which is remarkable, and it was because of this grant that we wrote. So, I know you're proud of the principals and the teachers and the accomplishments that they have made to get us to where we are today. So, that's why we're here tonight, for Martha to share a little bit about Special Leia, and our guru and Sped, and then for you to give y'all an update on where we are with preschool. So, that's why we're here tonight, for Martha to share a little bit about Special Leia, and our guru and Sped.
Is there any way that we can help try to get some of these on staff that are being contracted out, or is it better for them to be contracted?
To be perfectly honest with you, contract companies dangle a big figure in front of them, and they're not 100%, huh, I don't wanna say, I'm on, I can't say what I wanna say. So, let me repeat that, so they offer them a very large salary, but they also take their part of it out of that salary. Whereas, you know, we, we offer you a salary, and it's yours, so even in Texas, we're giving you your salary, and so that's all, it's just that mindset. When I go to job fairs and things that... When I go to job fairs and things that nature that these are the people I'm looking for, I say what I couldn't say. Because they don't know. They're looking at, "Oh, my lord, they're going to pay me $120 an hour." And so, that's all, but that's just that mindset. And it all falls down to, it looks like it's going to be a lot more money. I actually have two contracted therapists, and I won't tell you what category, that regret not going with me when I interviewed them. And they had to choose between the full system and a contracted company. Because now they know. Because if it snows, they still have to go. I mean, it's just little things like that that are benefits that sometimes you don't recognize. That you've still got to be on the highway if there's ice. Most of us are at home, working on our laptops, not on the ice. So, but that, it all boils down to that. It's not, like, I've never had anyone say, "You know, we can't hire anybody else." I mean, it's just little bits like that that are benefits. I try to, right. And I try really hard when I interview people, and I know that they are on the fence. I try to be really honest with them. Kind of how I roll. I want them to know, you know? I want them to get the reality of these are coming days you're going to get off, and you're not going to have to make a time. I try really hard to, but it boils down to that. We can't, and those systems, that they are on the fence. I try to be really honest with them. Kind of how I roll. I want them to compete with the hundreds and some dollars an hour. Because that's what it looks like on paper.
Yeah, and clarify, do we have any behavioral therapists? Because they were as needed.
So, that is an actual ABA therapist to contract with in extreme circumstances. Like I said, there are some steps involved before going that route just because there's some things IEP-wise that we need to do before we jump to the most severe. Sort of like putting somebody in private day placement because they've had one else left. So, it's that same mentality of going through the process and falling, make sure all the numbers and the eyes are crossed, and everybody's done. We've exhausted everything that the IEP can offer. So, we have a behavior specialist that helps manage that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. So, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet. Like having a behavior plan, and really knowing how to handle that. I hope that answers your question. That kind of manages that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. So, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet. So, like having a behavior plan, and really knowing how to handle that. I hope that answers your question. Manages that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. And so, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet. So, like having a behavior plan, and really knowing how to handle that. That kind of manages that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. And so, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet. So, like having a behavior plan, and really knowing how to handle that. That kind of manages that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. And so, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet. So, like having a behavior plan, and really knowing how to handle that. That kind of manages that piece of it. And to make sure the IEP process is followed through the level. And so, she gets called out frequently, but sometimes X, Y, and Z hasn't been done yet.
Yep, no, not there, yep. In discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
In discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. In discussion?
We haven't thrown.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Running from here. And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
In discussion? All those in favor say aye. Comments, those gentlemen? In discussion? We haven't thrown. All those in favor say aye. Running from here. Do, thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
My name is Martha. And I am a parent. Here's a self-contained preschool.
Comments, those gentlemen?
The reason why I believe in a lot of other people.
In discussion? All those in favor say aye. Running from here. Do, thank you so much.
One reason is, I just walked away. My name is Martha. It seems like they just got out. Another reason, a lot of parents have a good chance to get a consent agenda. Examples, three, my garden, and my boys, and a lot of other. I get my own as well. And, like I said, it's one week away. And then, we have a school show. It seems like they just got out. And money, natural trees. I wish you did, because we'd all be rich. And that's the reason why I'm here. Oh, and another thing, I know there's always, there's been problems with the attendance at schools. And having the kids go back this early would definitely not help because parents are still going to take their kids on vacation, and it's still hot this summer. So, I'm just asking you guys, whoever does the calendar and everything, for next year to please keep in mind to consider the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Dr. Husken?
Well, good evening again.
Oh, we have someone else? Oh, wait. Mr. Mason, I think we do have someone else who wants to speak.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, how y'all doing?
Yep, if you would state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Derek Fonda. I'm here to speak on behalf of, I guess, the football guys. I graduated '93. I played on record crew. Also, as we were celebrating, the Virginia High School League came into our locker room, which was under the stairs at the time. They stated that we could never host another playoff game in Halifax County because of our facilities. So, that was, what, 30, 30 years ago? So, I'm just saying, if y'all are going to build a new school, just please keep in mind that if you want to attract people to the area, and our big moneymaker is football and basketball. Because you can make this money up. When the Virginia High School League say, "Hey, look, we want to host a playoff game here," such, such, such. So, I mean, y'all know how it go. But, that old stadium, and I'm telling you, because I actually coach at middle school now. I used to coach for the high school. That field is horrible. I watched one of my athletes that had a full scholarship. He was a kicker. It rained, he slipped, and he tore his meniscus, and he lost his scholarship. And the field, actually, if you look at it, it goes like this. And that's because it has an irrigation system up under it. I know because I helped put it in. And it's like, if you get a brand-new house, you have your yard all laid out and stuff, pretty, nice. You take your key, and you stick it in that hole, and the contractor tells you, "We didn't have time to do the flooring." So, you walk inside, and you look, and you have shag carpet that's dirty all through the house. That's kind of like looking, you're going to have a brand-new high school or the old stadium. Even if you revamp it, it's still, you're going to spend about the same amount it is to build a new one. And I'm just asking y'all to take in consideration this, to look, because that's what's going to attract people in this area. Something pretty, something shiny. Thank you. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, Dr. Husken?
All right, well, good evening again, everyone. I hope everyone had a really good July 4th holiday. I know I certainly did. Enjoyed celebrating and even played a little golf. Didn't embarrass myself too badly out there. It's a good thing. Summer, as we heard, is definitely flying by. But, a lot of our students are really enjoying some really great experiences. Our summer school programs, our EGP kids, our, some kids are enjoying our governor's school programs around the state. Our gear up groups are having college-focused experiences. Our FCC LA kids are out in competitions. The marching band has been out practicing. They're getting ready to get geared up. I hope everybody's just worried about them out in the heat, but it doesn't seem to bother their kids as much as it does us old folks. Again, just to name a few, you'll see our kids just out as if, as if school's still in session, but they are really enjoying all these experiences. And again, thanks to all our staff that are working with all the kids this summer. Because it really is creating memories for our kids that they will never forget. These are the things that really, really matter to our kids the most. One big exciting thing that's going on right now is our transportation department is really preparing for this GPS rollout this fall. The units are here, they are being installed. The drivers, they have training coming up later this month. I tell you what, Mr. Medley and his team over there, they have been just committed to this being successful. We want this to be successful. We want everyone to know about it. Parents, please be on the lookout. Instructions are coming for how you'll be able to put the app on your phone and know where your students are, know where the bus is. It's just going to be exciting. You'll get way more information. It's coming. So, that you'll, again, it's all about safety. About knowing, you know, if your bus is going to be late, or where everything, where everything is, and what's going on. So, it's super exciting. We're just, we've been waiting for this, and it's, finally to be here is really neat. One last important item of interest is the Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax Plan. It is here, it was approved in our budget. And I think, employees, if you are years five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, or 35, and you've been with Halifax that whole time, your longevity bonus will be in your end-of-August paycheck. So, folks in finance are getting that. They're working with folks in HR. And that will be in your end-of-August paycheck. So, that's exciting. The other exciting benefits of the plan that will be posted on the website. So, go check it out. Again, it's just, I teach. We already have folks enrolled in the program. We have six currently enrolled in the program. And as folks are coming to us that are not licensed, if you're out there and you've always thought, "Wow, I've got a degree in something else, but I've really thought about teaching, but I don't know what it would take to get licensed." Give us a call. Give us a call in HR. Give us, give us a call. Let's talk about it. Maybe it's for you. We'd love to talk to you. So, the other thing is, if you're ready to renew your license, if you're already with us and it's time to renew your license, that's part of Stay With Us, Grow With Us. There's just, there's just some little things. It's just a little, small thank you for everything that you do for us as a staff. So, again, there's just, there's a lot in that package. So, please take a look. So, everybody else, enjoy the rest of your summer. It is going quickly, and I get that. So, we'll see everybody soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Husken. In my comments, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for your patience tonight as we kind of piece this meeting together. Summer is a busy time, but sometimes things happen in our day jobs, and it's really tough. I appreciate everybody making the effort to be here in person and remotely tonight. So, you know, thinking about what's going on in the county, even with summertime here, school technically not in session, there's still many, many good things happening in Halifax County schools and in the community. First, I know summer school and EGP schools were held. They were a huge success. Special thanks to all the teachers that helped run those programs. Later in this meeting, I think Dr. Hawkes is going to give us some great news regarding student achievements. Looking forward to that report. Certainly not going to steal your thunder, but really looking forward to that. As Mr. Maraska said, the high school project continues to come along. Even now, we can see progress almost daily. And once they start putting a brick on the outside, that's even going to add to, add to the appearance and show the public that they are moving forward and thankfully ahead of schedule. It's summertime, as Dr. Husken said, it's hot. But summertime in the South also means All-Star games are going on. So, congratulations to all of our boys' All-Star teams and girls' softball teams that are playing in All-Stars currently. I think Mr. Clay's team is battling as we speak right now. So, if you have a chance, get out and support those kids and let them know what a good job they're doing. Speaking of sports, we had two of our golfers in the school system competing in a Tar Heel Tour event today, held outside of Greensboro. That tournament will conclude tomorrow, so best of luck to those two gentlemen. Hope everyone is surviving the brutal heat that we've had recently. And I hope everyone is enjoying their summer break. But especially, I hope our teachers and our kids are enjoying some downtime and a very, very well-deserved break that is going way too fast. Thank you. Vice Chair Lloyd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your effort, sir. Committee reports. Facilities Committee, Mashat, will you prepare? Thank you.
Yes, we had our Facilities Committee meeting again this month. We went through the capital improvement projects that have been done recently, and we'll have a presentation on that in a little bit, so I won't go through any of that. We started our discussion about the regulation for the community use of the school facilities. We plan to update that in the coming months as well. And then, the majority of the time, we spent on the athletic complex. We had our coaches there, and they went through the plans. We took it through, took them through in detail, got their opinions, got their comments. Overall, they were very happy with the presentation, with the fields and the plans. So, that's moving forward. Obviously, it's still open. It's going to take us a little while to get to closure on that. But we have plenty of time to finish that. So, they're going to work on a few updates from feedback that we got from the coaches. And then, we will bring it back to the board.
Thank you. And I believe the Finance Committee actually met today. Mr. Potts, anything to report from that meeting?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We had, well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to this incredible hot beam. We appreciate your kind of being, it's really warm outside. We did get a lot of bad shit. Basically, what we were doing was going over what happened last year. You're probably going to hear about some blue buckets and some red buckets. When you do, don't be mad at us. It's good to have, make things simple for you when it comes to blue buckets and red buckets. So, the net was good to be, had an opportunity to go. So, before that, you know, we will be leaving for, what, four months now? Three, four months? Every month, that's our term. Every, is that? Four months, okay. Three, four, five, okay. But, again, thank you for listening. Thank you for coming. And I have one question. Did the, the people that provide, do the food cooking and stuff, did they go to somewhere? Where?
Just a few weeks.
Y'all know that?
FCC LA, Culverdale.
Culverdale, you went to San?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was San Francisco last year.
Okay.
Things travel all the time.
Out West.
I know. I was looking for that to come up. But, yeah, they did go to Seattle.
Always winning.
Yes, yes. So, let's, we'll put those behind. Don't give them proof of food. Thank you all here. Thank you, Mr. Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Appreciate that. Breaking down a financial resources presentation. Dr. Bucklue and Dr. Husken, I believe we already got a sneak preview of that. got a sneak preview of that.
All right, so this evening, we're going to share some information with you to help all of us be on the same page of funding resources. And we put together our fiscal year '24, that's the one we just finished, end-of-year analysis. So on this screen, that's on the, on this screen, we have laid out, on the right-hand side, you'll see all the revenues that are actual revenues, all of our expenditures, with an anticipated carryover of $4,996,810.55. If you'll remember, in a previous presentation, I went over our restricted funds that have to be carried over through the next year, and that are the three items that are listed right there, all-in Virginia, stronger connections, and the school construction state grant. So those are the balances that we are projecting that need to be carried forward, so that's going to be taken away from the anticipated carryover, leaving us a projected carryover Now, these numbers are not official until after the audit report is completed in October. So these are from what we have anticipated. On the left side of the screen, we gave you trended, the trends of the carryover balances that we have had, and these are actual audit numbers. So these are all held in the county for use of the schools, depending on the requests that we send in. So you may remember our current budget that we just were, had approved, we did request So that is where that is going to be pulled from, that, that list. So with this, it gives us a good idea of the amount of money that we do have sitting over in the county for use. And next. All right, so now you're going to, now we're going to start to talk about how we can use different buckets of money. So just start getting in your head, the first bucket I'd like to show you is our blue bucket of money. And any blue bucket of money we talk about will be money that is associated with the high school project. So how we landed at the money that can be attached to or spent for the high school project, it comes from these sources. So there's the $105 million bond, and that bond, and this is as of today, the bond, or as of May 31st, which was the last reporting of the bond, it has earned $9.3 million in interest. So that's, Mr. Simpson gave me the update today, and what he told me is, we haven't touched, we haven't paid any bills out of the bond yet, because we have been paying all of the bills so far out of our school construction grant of the $20 million. So that bond is still sitting there growing interest. So we have another six to nine months of potential interest from that 9.3, so maybe another million, but we can't count that. What I'm talking to you about tonight is actual money sitting in the bank, so that's the only money I'm going to put in the blue bucket. So we have $9.3 million from that 105, and it can only be attached to that, to our high school project. Now, we also have the $20 million in construction, and that's how we've been paying the bills. It can only be spent on the building itself, so that's what we're paying the bills down for right now, is anything we're buying. We're also, we've also saved 1.175 because we are buying all the big items ourselves. We're buying all the pipes and all the, the thing, when, when Vince comes and tells you our owner, our tax savings is this number, it's because we are buying the chillers and we are buying all the things, and we are, because we're public, we don't have to pay sales tax on it. So that, but that money as well can only be spent inside the building, but it ultimately comes off of the 129 for the total cost of the project. So, if you can go to the next. So, to keep it incredibly simple, the money in the blue bucket, today's money in the blue bucket is 9.3 million, and we have a total of 2.9 in our contingency. So the money we could put our hands on today is about 12 billion. If we put every little nickel in the bucket, we could, we can put our hands on 12 billion dollars. So that's our blue bucket money. And it can only, blue bucket money can only be spent for the high school. So the red bucket? So now we introduce you to the red bucket. So the red bucket has a little bit broader responsibility. Currently, the red bucket is part of our CIP plan. It contains the school construction state grant that we're carrying forward, so that's the 919,000. It also can include carryover funds from the trend analysis that I gave you, and that is estimated $6 million on the Board of Supervisors accounts. So the CIP plan is currently being revised to reflect updates, and the Facilities Committee has, has discussed priorities and addresses all the needs across the entire division. So this bucket can be used for any of the school division sites, including elementary and the high school as needed. So, this is, this kind of sums it all up. You have red bucket money that, that we need to use for, for anything. Blue bucket money can only touch the high school and anything associated, you know, whether that's projects around the high school. And if we don't use it by the, at some point, it just stays in the county coffers and goes to, to pay down the mortgage or whatever, I don't know what we would do with it, but it needs to go in some way to benefit the high school project in and of itself. And blue bucket money can't be spent on red bucket projects, but red bucket money can touch any of our, anything, so, because it is our, it is our money. So hopefully this visual, because again, I needed it, separated it out for myself, hopefully this gives everyone a better idea of what our money is, where our money is, and how doing one doesn't take away from the other, and doing other things, how it can, how we can do certain things for every, everybody, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it adds to things and it doesn't take away from things, but it also gives us a clear number of, how much money do we have? And I think that's important, to know what we have, how much we have, and what pots it's sitting in. So, questions?
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you, that's clear. I had a question going back to an email that I had sent a couple months ago, and Mr. Simpson had weighed in, and my understanding from what he was saying was, depending on the long-range capital needs of the school, the remaining funds in the bond could be used to pay for additional capital work on the high school, and/or it could be used to pay interest portion of the bond debt payment. I don't understand that, could you explain that? Thus, thus bringing up the same amount of the 1% Sillis tax, which then can be put towards the other school capital needs and the overall facilities fleet. My understanding was, the bond, if some of this stuff happens, could be used for the other schools, according to what Mr. Simpson said in an email.
That is, that was, that was not my understanding, because the, my, our understanding has always been that that bond was for the high school project, and it had to be used for the high school project, and that's, I mean, that's been his conversation with me every ti, I mean, I would need further conversation with him to really understand that, because that's been, he's been pretty clear about that every, in every conversation with me. So I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just don't have a level of understanding that, that's, because that's, I've been pretty clear about, that bond was for that purpose and it has to stay for that purpose. Now, yes, could it be used to pay that bill, but all that does is just, I mean, we're not necessarily going to pay the mortgage off any sooner, we're not going to do anything, it's just going to put money back in that pot, and, and, and we're not going to recognize any, any real gain from that. So, I mean, it's a choice, it's definitely a choice, but...
Could we clarify with Scott about this email?
Sure. I'm going to need you, could you send me your question in, in an email so that I can ask the right question, because I'm not exactly sure how to frame the question.
Right.
So if you could help me with that, I'd appreciate that.
Michelle, you have something to add to that?
I was just going to say what, what Dr. Huskin just said, that he's mentioned multiple times that we can use that bond interest to pay off the bond, but basically that's making an extra car payment a month. It doesn't shorten, it, it might shorten it by a month or two at the end of the loan, but it's not going to give us any money up until we get to that point. So it's probably not really in our best interest to, to do that. But I, I agree, if we can get that clarified, that would be really helpful, because I think that's what he, that email was saying.
I think that's what he meant, but if we, yes, it's a choice that we could do that, but would it really be in the best interest of our children and what we should do for our county? Again, that's up to you all. We're just trying to get clarity on what, where our money is. I want to be able to show you all where the money is.
Yep. Good presentation. Any other questions? Mr. Lloyd?
No, I just made a comment. It appears to me, when I look at those pots of money that, even if you go back to some of the citizens' comments, that there's money there to fund the capital, the capital project, and it's still funding all of the capital improvements that we made, that we raised at elementary and elementary schools. I mean, I think that presentation definitely clarified that, or solidified the faults. So I appreciate you showing where the different pots of money were there located.
Yeah, and that was, I think that's been maybe some, some tug for some people, like, if, if I do this, we can't do that. And so again, just to get clarity on where the money is and where it's sitting.
And where it has to go.
Where it has to go, and then I think, you know, Mr. Garber tonight is going to show some things that have been done, so that, so that people understand that we're, not, not everything is going to just the high school project, that other things are being done. And I think that's super important, that people understand that we are taken care of, and we're trying to be good stewards of all of our buildings, and we're trying to, to touch all the schools.
Mr. Lloyd, yes?
Yeah, I do think it's important to explain that, you know, in my town, the board, each year, I would say we average 1.5 to 2.5 carryover reserves that typically go into the capital improvement budget. So, you know, when you think about it, three, four million, that would be there, personally maybe at least four, after you took any portion of that money from athletics, based on the interest that we're accruing. But if we add that plus the capital carryover money that we'll receive annually, I think that, the money is definitely there, I think, the other schools, which is absolutely a positive piece to all of us.
All right.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hawkes?
I have something. Oh, sorry, Stacy has a question.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Runyon?
I just want to clarify, when we're talking about the public, and we say high school project, are we specifically referring to the construction project of our high school, or are we referring to, for example, anything to do with, you know, whatever is decided with the athletics facility? Can you clarify that just a little bit?
It's, nothing's been decided, it's just whatever anybody decides to do with the high school. So that, it's what, nothing has been decided, so it is, there's 9.3 million, that's, that's above and beyond the 129 million dollars that's already been decided. So that 9.3 million dollars is the money that the bond, like, you all borrowed 100, 105 million dollars, so that money has made money, just like you invest your money with Derek. You go see Derek, can you invest your money? Your money makes money. So that 105 million has made 9.3 extra million dollars. So you all can decide whether you're going to make an extra, extra bond payment and help the county pay, pay the bill off early, or you can decide whether you want to, and, you know, so they pay the bond up, so they pay the bill off a year early, or you can decide to do whatever, whatever it is, buy more furniture, or, but, what you can't do is a change order, because then that changes the, the 129 million dollars to the, to the project, you can't add another wing to the building, you can't, you can't change the construction project, but you could build a field, you could, you could do whatever you want, but nothing has been decided. There's just 9.3 million dollars that this board has to decide what they want to do with it, and there's 2.9 million dollars in money savings from the project itself that it has, that's come off of the 129. Does that make, am I making sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Can you clarify what, if I understood her question, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off base, it sounded like she's asking about what is included in the high school project? Is it specifically just the high school building, or is it a certain square footage around it, or?
Okay, so inside the high school project, what you get, what you bought for 129 million is the building, all the stuff that goes inside, all the furniture, all the desks, all the, they call that FFNE, all the, all the things that, all the office furniture, all the kid desks, all the, all the things that it takes to run a high school, all the technology, all the security, all the cameras, every door lock, I mean, we have to pick out every doorknob, I mean, you have turnkey bought everything that has to go inside for that 129. And that's included in the mortgage payment that you will start to make. In addition to that, you now have an extra 9.3 million as of today, and you also have the 2.9 million in contingencies from all the tax savings and just money that, okay, stuff didn't cost as much as you think, and so shocky, construction is giving it back to us. So that's where this other money is coming from, and you can only spend it at the high school, to do something.
Yeah, just the clarification, I think they said that as part of the high school project, that would include anything on the high school campus, so that includes athletic facilities on the high school campus. And I, I believe they said that, that did not qualify for the football field up on top of the hill, because that's not part of the actual high school campus, it's part of Halifax County Public Schools campus, but it's not the high school. And I believe that's what, is that, was, was that your understanding as well?
I don't know what you, I...
I think she's saying that where the football field is nailed is not considered the high school campus? Is that correct?
Oh, I hadn't heard that, I hadn't gotten that level of clarity. I, I never heard that, so.
Which means that high school funds wouldn't qualify for renovating the existing high school football field, because it's not part of the high school campus. But if I'm the only one that understood that, maybe, we might need to clarify.
I haven't heard that question being asked or answered, so I had not heard.
Probably some clarity from the Facilities Committee.
Yeah, I never heard that, so, but I'm not disputing it, I just hadn't heard it.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Ms. Runyon, you good? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, good evening Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, Dr. Huskin, and board members. Tonight, we are presenting to you very preliminary SOL data. This is data that we received from Matt Hurt, from our CIP Consortium, which is a comprehensive instructional program, and he is an individual who we pay to help complete data around the state. This is not data I'm sharing from the state yet. Normally, you know, we'll come back and do that at a later time. So I just want to make sure that as we're going through this data, you understand that it is not finalized, we have some numbers that have not been accounted for yet, that will come and be included in this data. Specifically, high school comes to mind immediately, because we have some substitute test data that has not been calculated by the state yet. So as we go through this, you're going to see by school, I'm sharing each content area with you. We'll go to the first school. And what you'll see is each content area and the pass rate. And what I've included for you is the growth that has been made by some students. The state has, with our SOL scores, we've included where you can show growth and also get credit.
get credit if students shows a substantial amount of growth. So by test category, subject area, you can see by each school how much growth, how many students show growth, in addition to those who passed. So at the end of each slide, you will see the combined rate score for the content areas. And of course, they're in alphabetical order, by elementary, then middle, then high. So here you have Clay's Mills data. I'll just allow you to take a sneak peek at that last column, just to see where we are. And then Cluster Springs. As you can see, as we go through the data, we have several areas that we're doing very well in, and we have some areas that we know we still continue to work towards. History and science are going to be some areas that you're going to see some similarities as we go through. Here's Needville. Scottsburg. Sinai. South Boston. Sydenham Jennings. And as, as Mr. Davis is click, click, clicking over here, I will tell you, I heard Dr. Huskin's side comment about tremendous growth, and you, we do have places that show tremendous growth. And when I come back and am able to share the direct data from the state, and you'll have some color codings, and you'll see how much growth some schools did show, enough to get turned green instead of red when we do that. All the final data will be released at the end of September to the public. And then I will come back to you probably at the October meeting, because it is, it's the end of September 1st to October when they're going to release it. And then I can share with you the official scores, as well as the accreditation ratings. And here is the final one, the high school. I was it by the middle school, I missed it. Thank you. All right. So tonight, we just wanted you to have a sneak peek at where we are.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Hawkes? All right. Thank you so much. Maintenance, operation, and capital improvement project. Mr. Garber?
Good evening Chairman Mason, Dr. Huskins, fellow school board members. I'm Jeff Garber, Director of Operation and Maintenance. Let me apologize right up front, I'm not a good speaker, so I'll be reading most of what's going on. Go to the next slide, please. My goal tonight is to explain that you, you may and may not have heard, averter work order system. We have a work order system in the maintenance department. And you probably heard some positives and negatives of it, so I'm going to take a few minutes to try to explain how we operate in the maintenance department. And then we'll get to the capital improvement stuff. Go to slide three. When we're fully staffed, there's 19 levels, including myself and the secretary. Right now, we're three short, so there's only 16 levels. We divided into three different groups, as you can see up here. Each one of our crews has a foreman, has a working foreman, and he's responsible for ordering, ordering the needed material, communicates with the crews as to what jobs to be done and when to be, when to do them. He also keeps up with the parts and supplies that are bought and logs it into our system. Now, the three crews are the HVAC, building utilities, and building the grounds. A quick description of what the crews are responsible for, the HVAC group handles energy controls, exhaust fans, and all things related to the heating and cooling, which, which is a lot. Our building and utilities group handles all the electrical, plumbing, carpentry, including the PA systems, security system, fire alarm systems, kitchen equipment, doors, windows, floors, ceilings, hallways, and so on. The building and ground handles all the grass cutting, the cutting back the trees and the brush, the spraying weed killer, pesticides, painting, moving items and material through the school system. Now, we perform maintenance on 15 facilities with approximately 1,76,000 square feet on the buildings, over 480 acres of land we maintain. Now, get to the work order system. When a maintenance issue arises, a teacher, custodian reports it to the school secretary or the principal. Once the principal confirms that it's a maintenance issue, either the secretary or the principal submits a work request into a maintenance department using a Google form link. This request initiates a creation of a work order, either by the maintenance secretary, director, or one of the foremans. Our work order system name, Maintenance Management, was designed by Charlie McIntyre in our IFT department. It tracks every job, assigns tests to the technicians, based on priority levels such as the high, medium, and low. Emergencies are directly called into our office and properly handled with the appropriate technician. To ensure organization efficiency, each technician carries a tablet, just like this one. There's an app on his tablet, and all work orders are assigned to that app. Upon completing a job, the technician enters its time, time spent on, on the job, materials used, and description of the work performed. Work orders can be updated through what is needed. Each morning, technicians receive a complete days of work orders assigned by the foreman, based on a priority. Through our work order system and time cards, every minute of the technician's day is documented. Now, in the fiscal year spanning June of 2023 to July of 2024, we handle 5,130 work requests. I like our department's dedication to productivity. Next slide. Oh, I'll jump to the back one. Now, this is an example of the form submitted by the schools. This is what the school sends to the maintenance department when they have an issue. And then the next slide. This slide, this is what we create and send to the technician to give the description of what all, what all he needs to do. Then our technicians are more or less trained in a particular field, which means the HVAC technician may not have the knowledge, you know, the materials or the tools to take on a plumbing issue. And I bring this up because we've been questioned about that. They think everybody can fix everything, and that's, that's not true. So, sometimes the, sometimes the technician will stop going in the hall, whether it be a teacher or custodian, they'll catch somebody coming in the hall and want something done. Now, if this only is going to take 10 to 15 minutes, when he finishes what he was about to do, he's to go in and handle it, if, if he can. So it's, it's not a matter of just putting them off. If, if he can do it, he needs to go in and take care of it. If it's a true emergency, it should be reported to the office and then called into the maintenance department. And then we'll get the proper technician or detail immediately. If a technician has to be at the school site when an emergency occurs, he'll call it in to get the proper technician on the way and do what he can until somebody gets there. Now, please don't think we sit around waiting for work orders to come in. We, we're not sitting here. I've been here 24 years. We have never, not once, called up where we had nothing to do. So, it's, you won't have to worry about that happening. Our elementary schools, as everybody knows, starting to get a little age on them, so need a little TLC. And I think with central office staff and myself, we've been working on trying to get them up to date. And I've listed a few things that, that we've got accomplished over the last few years that have really helped. This is where the capital improvement. We've installed touchless sensors on all the plumbing fixtures in all schools for sanitary reasons. Replace the oil-fired boilers and water heaters at the middle school with energy-efficient LP gas water heaters. Replace the oil-fired boilers at Saropson Elementary with efficient gas boilers. Install bottle fillers on the water fountains in all schools, so you can fill a water bottle while you're putting your merch on a water fountain spurt. We installed central heating and air in the original section of Sydenham Jennings School. Install central heating and air in the original section of Clay's Mills School. Install central heating and air in the original section of Scotchberg School. Replace the 1960s water heater with a smaller and more efficient water heater at Scotchberg. And, and you're probably thinking, why would he list a water heater? These, these are big water heaters, by the way. Replace the flat roof on a transportation building. Replace oil-fired water heater with efficient electric water heater at Cluster Springs. Replace the 1960s water heater with a smaller and more efficient water heater at Sinai. Install LED lights in the middle school and all the elementary schools except Clay's Mills and Measal. Sinai was completed in April, and Measal, they started today, so that's being done as we speak. And here's a list of things we have in progress. Replace the roof on the addition section of Sydenham Jennings, including the library and gym. That was actually completed last week, so that one's done. Replace the walk-in refrigerator freezer at Scotchberg, it's on auto, as soon as we get it in and it get replaced. Install central heating and air condition through ERK, the entire building at Sinai and Measal. And we're going to do that this year to be completed by September of '25. And like I said, I, I know we all have to work together. Want to give our children a safe, efficient, inviting environment to learn in. I just wanted to give you a quick update on, on some of our accomplishments. Have any questions?
Well, thank you, Ms. Garber. I think with the number of locations and the age of some of them, I don't think any of us think you guys are sitting around waiting for the, for the next thing to pop up to work on, so.
Any questions for Mr. Garber? Ms. Ex.
Thank you. I was wondering if we'll get a, a copy of the things in the current CIP plan and the, just checked off what was done and what's not done.
Okay.
As the facilities committee have been looking at that. Will that be provided to the board as well?
It will.
We can get it to you, yeah.
Thank you. And I have to ask, because this was a conversation that happened before I got on the board, and there was a plan to get some money for this, but then the interest rates went cahoot. But gymnasiums at Sinai and Needville, are there conversations happening with either of those schools? Is that part of the current conversations? I know there's 400 kids outside every day at these schools, and it's a safety issue still, so I'm still trying to push for the schools in my district to get gymnasiums.
Well, we can put it on the wish list. I've heard that. I don't remember being on the capital improvement plans. It may be a little bit down the road. I'd have to check and see.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on the current one or not, but it was a...
It's listed as an open item, saying that these, these two schools don't have a gym, but it's not included on the five-year plan for saying that we, it's in scope to be done.
Okay. Michelle, you have something?
I, I just wanted to say thank you for putting that together. It, it's very helpful to be able to see the items in a list, to see what we have done, because we have done significant work in just the last couple of years on the elementary schools, and you did a great job presenting, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Garber.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, policy update?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Huskins, good evening. Including your packet, you will find the May 2024 policy updates. As you recall, last month, we gave you the, the strike-through version of that, so I ask that you approve that, so that we can include that in the current policy manual.
And do you still include the updates from this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
The email from, from Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, page 20, no, I'm kidding, again. Thank you for making those updates. I move that we approve the recommended changes, policy changes.
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the policy updates presented to us tonight, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, a move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. Personnel, the appointment, resignation, and salaries of specific division employees is authorized by Section 2.2-3711.a1 of the Code of Virginia. Disciplining specific students of the school division is authorized by Section 2.2-3711.a2 of the Code of Virginia.
Can I get a motion to move to closed session?
Contracts. One more. Contracts, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scopes of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, is authorized by Section 2.2-3711.a29 of the Code of Virginia.
Sir.
You have first, you second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Thank you.